Hi, good evening. Welcome to West Covina City Council Meeting. Today is December 3rd. Right now it's about 7 o'clock, so our meeting is sectioned. So today invocation will be led by our pastor Samuel Martinez from our Amazing Love Ministry and Hope for West Covina. And then a pledge of allegiance will be led by me. Okay, all rise please.
We thank you for the privileges that we have as American citizens and residents of our country. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our police officers that are out there protecting our freedoms. We thank you for our servicemen, Father, domestically and abroad, that are also protecting our freedoms. And for all those that have served in past years and past wars and have given their lives, that we can be here exercising our freedoms. And as we gather here around the affairs of our country, we remember the words of that great patriot, our founding father Benjamin Franklin, who said, "God governs in the affairs of man, and if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, is it probable that an empire, in this case, a city, can rise without his aid?" The answer is no, Father. We need your help. We need, as King Solomon said, the wisdom of God, for wisdom is the principal thing. Grant wisdom to our mayor, the city council, our city manager, and all those that are in authority in this city, Father. Protect our neighborhoods, keep our schools safe havens, Father. And we pray for the businesses, that our businesses prosper. And we thank you, Father, for blessing our country, for blessing West Covina. God bless America, and God bless our city of West Covina. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Castellanos?
Here.
Councilman Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Wu?
Here.
Okay, now, do we, for city manager, city attorney, do we have anything we pull from the closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. With respect to item number one on closed session, on a vote of five to zero, council directed staff to pay the plaintiff $35,000 in exchange. The plaintiff agreed to dismiss the lawsuit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Anything else? City manager? No. Before I move into the presentation, I want to welcome one person just moving to West Covina, become our new resident of West Covina. So welcome our city manager, just recently purchased a house and moving, become one of us and in the same boat. So welcome, city manager. Okay. Now we go to the presentation. Right now, we have a census presentation by Ms. Justine Chen. Okay, 2020, okay, is very important for our resident to genuinely to fill out all the information. So Justine, you can maybe give a presentation, how important for our resident to fill out genuine about their status and population, everything. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. My name is Justine, and I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau. I'm covering the San Gabriel Valley area, and I'm here to tell you about the census and why it's important to fill it out. Next slide. So our goal is to count everybody once, only once, and in the right place. This means everybody that is living in the United States regardless of citizenship. So some of the reasons why we do the census, first of all, next slide. It's in the Constitution. I'm not going to read that to you, but it's mandated that we count every single person that is living within the United States every 10 years, every year that ends in zero. So the first one was in 1790. The next one is going to be next year, starting in March. Another reason why we do the census, next slide, is that it has to do with fair representation. So after we count everybody that is in all the census tracts, we re-portion the House of Representatives according to population for each state. So California has the most number of representatives because we are the most populous state with 53 seats. We've never lost a seat. We've only gained seats or stayed the same. After 2010, we stayed the same, but we are at risk of losing one, maybe even two seats according to some think tank projections because Los Angeles County is the hardest to count county in the entire United States. Next slide. So after all of the census data is collected, that is available to the local governments to redraw boundaries of congressional and state legislative districts to account for population shifts. Next slide. More importantly, it has to do with federal funding. So we have $675 billion at stake, and that goes towards funding local programs such as Head Start, sorry, Head Start, school lunch and breakfast programs, infrastructure, health clinics, public schools. And so unless we know how many people are in each area, we don't know how much money we will get. Next slide, please. So really, it comes down to power and money. Next slide. This is not the presentation that I sent, but that's okay. I'm not going to repeat all of the same things that I just listed. So next slide. I wanted to emphasize that all of your responses are protected by Title 13 of the U.S. Code. The census is confidential, and it's required by law, and the results of the census are only reported in statistical format only, which means only numbers and percentages. We don't share any personal information such as your name or your birth date with any government agencies. And all census employees such as myself swear a lifetime oath to protect respondent information, which means if I were to leave the Census Bureau and work somewhere else, I am still required to uphold this oath until I pass away. So penalties for wrongful disclosure on our part include up to five years imprisonment and/or a fine of $20,000 to $50,000. Next slide. So the biggest change to the census is that you'll be able to respond online. In the past, it's only been through paper. So in the past, we would send you the form, you'd have to fill it out, and remember to mail it back to us. Now, you're going to be getting a postcard in the mail, and the postcard will have a website on it for you to log on to. Next slide, please. You'll also be able to respond by phone. The Internet and phone options will be available in English as well as 12 other foreign languages. And the paper form will still be available as well as door-to-door follow-up if you have not filled it out in any of the first three formats. So this is going to start in March. Next slide, please. And this is the timeline that we're looking at. So we start in March, you'll receive several reminders. If you haven't filled it out by the last reminder, you'll get the paper questionnaire. And then in May and June, we'll start going door-to-door for anybody else who has not responded. And we wrap up everything the end of July. So you have from March through July to fill out your census. Next slide. If you're interested in figuring out where the low responses are by census tract, you can go to census.gov/rome, R-O-A-M. Next slide, please. If you go to that website, you can type into the search box your zip code, your city, your state, your county, and it will zoom into that area. Next slide, please. And then it'll pop up with the demographic information of that particular census tract. At the very top, you will see the low response score, and you can kind of figure out why they might have had a low response based on the demographics. Next slide. Next slide. So we are actually hiring for jobs, starting now. So if you're interested in part-time or full-time jobs, they're all temporary, but you can fill out the application online. You only need to be a U.S. citizen and 18 and over. So please go to 2020census.gov/jobs to apply for positions with the census. Next slide. We also have a program for schools. It's called Statistics in Schools, where you can learn about the census through curriculum that's already put together by the census, and it's broken up by grade level, so it goes K through 12. And you can teach it through different subjects like math, statistics, history, and geography. And that's available to the public if you go to census.gov/schools. Next slide. Next slide. So these are the hard-to-count populations that we try to focus on. Los Angeles County has a lot of hard-to-count populations, and that's what makes it very difficult to enumerate. I'm not going to read that list to you, but you can kind of get a sense of what we're dealing with here. Next slide. So please fill out your census. It's only going to take about 10 minutes, but it's going to impact your community for the next 10 years. Next slide. Next slide. If you have any questions, that's my contact information, and if you have any questions, I can take questions.
Council, do you have any question? Nope. Okay, thank you so much. I think this is very important, 2020 census, everybody really to fill it in because our tax dollars, we need to get it back. So we need to fill it up, so we had no exactly the population and the people and the status, okay? So just like Justine says, nothing string attached, okay? We need to, okay, fill this up, okay, so we can get what we deserve. Okay, thank you. Next, we are going to have a presentation from the blue flag team. Yeah, thank you. Okay, I'm going to move you guys first, so you guys have to wait. Okay, done. Okay, so I think important for our children go home and earlier, so because curfew, okay, for you guys. So anyway, it's very important for after-school program, and I want to thank the parent, the volunteer, for your dedication. Frank, okay, thank you so much. I went to your opening areas, okay, and it's a magnificent event. I want to thank you guys. West Covina has a very strong after-school program, and after-school program is so important for our children to grow up, which they learn how to do a teamwork and how to learn about, okay, confidence, their confidence. And the most important thing is how to work together and listen to the adult. But thank you so much for coming, okay? And for the coach, okay? Okay, I think we have four person, right? Two, can we have a coach come over here? And then we have all the player. Congratulations for your championship. High five. High five. Hey, I won't bite. I guarantee I won't eat you alive, okay? Okay, high five. High five. Good job. Congratulations. 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 Pound it, pound it, pound it. Okay, pound it. Okay, good job. Okay, and you? And you? Okay, coach, you want to say something?
Okay. Come another side, please. It's our president.
President?
Okay, go ahead. I want to thank the city of West Covina for bringing us down here and recognizing us today. Let's go have all the kids turn around. Obviously, we couldn't be here today if it wasn't for all the kids working as hard as they did. It was a really, really long, tough season. They worked really hard, and at the end of the season, it actually paid off, just like we told them. We had very good chemistry on this team, and obviously, it's why we were able to come here and actually take the championship. From talking to George, the president, right now, before we came in, I don't think we've had a flag team go to the championship and win, and this is the first time. So it's a big accomplishment for the kids and for the city of West Covina. Also, I want to thank the coaches, Johnny for calling all the plays, Richard, Louis, the 80s, Carmen, Michaela, George, the president, and our team moms, Tiffany, Alexia, and especially Erica for all the funding that she did for our fundraising. So again, you know, the kids played really hard and practiced really hard, and it paid off, and thank you very much for having us today.
Again, I want to thank the city of West Covina for all their commitment that they put back into our program, helping us get in the fields. It's a big hassle having 10 teams this year, close to 230, 285 kids we have both in football and cheer. So it's a big commitment, a lot of juggling around, timeframes, people's schedules, the parent's schedules, kid's schedules, getting everyone here, the hard work the kids put in there, they went undefeated the whole season. So we had a total, we had a total of four teams, four teams made it into quarterfinals and semifinals, two in the finals, and they were the only team that made it out successfully. But thank you, guys, city of West Covina. Thank you, coaches and parents, for bringing your kids out to our program.
Want to say something quickly? One minute? Hey, this is your only chance. Okay.
Frank? So, you know, I want, I want to just, you know, reemphasize the dedication because these are all volunteers here at council and staff, 100% volunteer, from our president, our first-year president, who has done an incredible job, and of course, working so many thankless hours. He's done a wonderful job because of everything that he's done as a leader for our program and also for the city of West Covina. He's allowed the opportunity for these children's lives to be changed, not only because they're playing sports, but because they're student athletes. And that's something that is so important and sometimes missed because they have to have a minimum grade point average in order to even participate. And it's accountable, and it's checked later in the year the second time in order for them to continue to go through this. So what you have here is not only a wonderful group of volunteers that are from West Covina, but also that you have student athletes that are establishing themselves with education, teamwork, and discipline, knowing what it takes to be champions forever. So again, congratulations, and thank you, mayor and the council.
Let's line everybody up over here, guys, and we're going to call you guys up, and the mayor's going to present you guys with a certificate.
Okay, this is for you guys. So you want to go this way first or go, okay, your children first? Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
If you want to call them up?
No, 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 you call them.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, Giovanni Navarro. Turn around. Good job. Anthony Tejera.
Anthony. Champion.
Turn around so they can take a picture of you. Adrian Velasco. Carlos Wood. Christian Acuna.
Christian.
Okay, Carlos, go on that side. Gabe Bolak. Raymond Cruz. Evan DeLeon. Over here. Adrian Gonzalez.
Adrian.
Wearing the medals, I like it. Anthony Gonzalez.
Anthony.
Yoshi Hernandez, my son. Moses Lopez.
Moses.
Julian Medina.
Julian.
Oh, he didn't make it, actually. So we'll hold this one. Kayden Jackson. Made our winning touchdowns.
Touchdown.
And then the teammate D, Carmen Tejera.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Michaela Aguilar, our assistant A.D. And assistant coach, Richard Tejera. Assistant coach, Luis Navarro. Assistant coach, Johnny Acuna. Me, head coach, Rick Hernandez.
Mayor Wu?
And I also want to recognize Kenji and Louis. They helped us out on all our practice games, and they were our unofficial water boys throughout the games. And also, David's brother that helped us out too over there. We didn't have a big team, so they were actually our practice squad. Who's this one?
Mayor Wu, they have a little chant for us, they said.
We got one more picture with the, with the, with the coach, with the mayor. Okay. With the president right here. Come in over here, and afterward, you're going to do a chant. After the picture, because they get kind of crazy. Okay, we're going to do the chant. Before we do the chant, just again, I want to thank the team moms, Erica, Alexa, and Tiffany, again, for everything you guys did. Cool. Okay, so all right, guys, we're going to do our chant for the last time, all right? Well, we got the Christmas parade, too. So we'll be at the Christmas parade, in case you guys are there.
Okay, ready?
All right, guys, you guys ready?
Yes.
Who are we?
Rule it!
Who are we?
Rule it!
Who's house?
Our house!
Who's house?
Our house!
Who are we?
Rule it!
Thank you so much.
And goodbye!
Goodbye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much for coming to council meeting. Thank you so much. Appreciate. Hey, hey, you guys have to win again next year, okay? We're going to invite you back. Say thank you so much. This is our futures, okay? Can see our kids very happy. This is the important thing to continue to support our after-school program. Thank you again, parent and the volunteers, thank you so much. The coaches, thank you. Okay. Shall we go to the next one? Bye. Okay, thank you. Try carefully. Okay, next agenda, basically, next presentation. West Covina has a huge population of Filipino-American, and they be silently support our city and helping a lot of program and doing a lot of charity work. And today, and our city council decide to have a resolution of recognition for our Filipino-American. And don't forget, the Filipino-American in West Covina, I think you guys have the biggest population, okay, in the city of West Covina. So we want to make sure we recognize you, and we want to have the CEO of, okay, the Filipino-American Association, Fanadico, you want to come up to say something? You will come up?
Thank you so much, AR. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to be here in front of the city council. Also, it's an honor also to be with you here, receiving this honor and recognition from the city council. I'd like to thank councilman Lloyd Johnson, Dario Castellano, Jessica Shoemaker, and of course, who motioned, Lady Loa Vasarano. Viado, the first Phil Am council member here in city of West Covina. And we always thinking of helping West Covina. But if not for Mayor, of course, Tony Wu, for empowering us, we should not be here today. And we will continue our support to the city of West Covina. Thank you so much.
And, okay, again, again, I think this is important to recognize a lot of different association, a group in our city, and because they have been sometimes, okay, and obviously, but I think it's very important for them to continue bring more business to West Covina, okay, and help our West Covina improvement, okay, to enlighten, okay, our city, improve our city residents' lives, okay? And thank you so much. And here, there's a resolution of recognition for your organization. Thank you so much for your contribution, okay, in our city. Thank you so much. You want to come up? And any city council want to join the pictures? Okay, yeah, yeah, welcome to join us. Okay, next one. TJ, you want to come up? This is our last presentation, okay? And TJ is, okay, NAACP is in West Covina branch, and TJ is one of our resident and been helping the city a big time, okay, for a lot of program. So tonight, I want to, okay, as our five city council have a recognition, okay, resolution of recognition about NAACP for your contribution for our city, and if maybe you can talk about another program going to come up, okay, this coming year.
First, thank you, guys. Thank you, council, for having us today. Like I said, my name's TJ Campbell. I'm San Gabriel Valley branch president. We are very proud of the partnership that we have with the city of West Covina. City of West Covina actually is our host. It is our home. Even though we serve the whole San Gabriel Valley, city of West Covina is our home. We've had a great outstanding partnership with the city for over 25 years. Just next year, next month, which is, which is next year, we'll be hosting our 21st we'll be hosting our 21st Martin Luther King Day celebration that's right out here in the quad, that is supported by the city of West Covina, that we could not do and run that program for 21 years without the great support of the city. So again, we're appreciative of that. There is plenty programs that we run through the year. Our mission is to ensure the political, economic, social, and educational process for all citizens and to fight and work with race-based discrimination in our country. Our branch really focuses on the educational piece and the social equity piece. Those are the things that are most focused or are priorities. We do that through a bunch of groups, programs throughout the year. One of them is a youth summit where we bring in 50 kids, high school-level students, and teach them about the transition to secondary school, which the city of West Covina is a great partner with that. They actually host that event for us at the Senior Citizen Center every single year. We're looking at our fourth year coming up this year. So we are just appreciative of the connection that we have with the city, the support that we have from people like Mayor Tony Wu, for members like Mr. Lloyd Johnson, who has supported us for Leti. We are very appreciative of Jessica as well. Sorry, I'm lucky enough to know most of these people by first name, which I'm very proud of. That shows that we do have a relationship and bond. And ultimately, I'd just like to thank Tony Wu, because he's doing a great job leading and bringing all people to the table. And that is what we're appreciative of, you know? And I recognize you guys as an organization that's an ethnic-based organization, but understanding that all of us together live here in the community, live here in the city of West Covina. I am a resident. I grew up here. I went to Nogales High School. I transitioned through college. I'm now back at West Covina, at Nogales High School, coaching the basketball team. So I am not just talking the talk. I'm walking the walk. I'm contributing to our community. And I'm looking forward to working with other organizations to make sure we have a better future for all people. So I just want to thank you guys for that. And I would love to see everyone in the room here, January 20th. It's from 11 to 2 o'clock, the MLK Day celebration, which is another multicultural event that supports Martin Luther King's dream, which is supporting all races. So I thank you for that. And I think I've taken enough of your time today. Thank you.
And I went to NAACP event, the gala, okay, I think last month, in October. And I say, hey, TJ, you are the first person I met that can speak more than me. Okay, so, okay, and nobody can beat me, but you beat me, okay? And you talk much better than me. And I want to say this, okay? I want to show my appreciation about NAACP, okay? They are struggling, they are fighting, and they're consistent, okay, and persistent, and continue to fight for this discrimination and this and that. And I said that during their gala, and I made a speech, I say, the reason my background can come up to serve and to be elected is from you guys, okay? From you guys for, okay, years and years of fight, years of civil rights, okay? And let why anybody, everybody, okay, all have a chance to serve and to do the good thing for our city. So I deeply appreciate for your help and in our city, continue partnership with us, continue to fight for this racism, and fight for the equality for all people in our city, in our country. But thank you so much. Here, representing West Covina about our five city council of 120,000 population, I want to have this resolution of recognition for your outstanding achievement. Continue partnership with our cities. Thank you so much. So, next one, we are going to oral communication. So anybody want to address to council? Please provide the yellow card and give to our city clerk. So how many we have? Five, okay? So would you please start the first one?
Good evening. I'd like to call forward Jerry Potras, followed by Jim Grivich, followed by Peter Davies.
Good evening. I am here to talk about rebuttals and your recommendation, whatever words you want to use, that on your measure, sales tax measure, that there not be a rebuttal. Rebuttals and debate go way back to the founding of this country. It's a free speech issue. We value debate in this country. Good ideas don't need political trickery. Good ideas will stand up to free speech and debate. The measure is stacked for the union. There's nothing to be afraid of, of debate. Having a rebuttal should be part of it. I ask that you approve what you're going to approve, but allow a rebuttal as part of a free speech tradition. Thank you.
Jim Grivich, I frequently have charts for you today, but today it's just going to be one document. The, uh, the document that's being passed out to you is from the state auditor's report about the cities in the state. And the reason I'm giving it to you is I doubt you've seen this information before. I have a personal talent. It was discovered some 50 years ago when I started working. I can look at a book of 300 pages and find the one important number in the middle of it. And that's what I'm going to be giving you tonight. From the state auditor's report, roughly on page, I think it was 270 or so, there is a listing of all of the cities in the state and their relative pension risk. Unfortunately, on that list, West Covina is ranked number one, which on that list means the worst in the entire state in terms of pension risk. The way they measure that is the amount that has to be paid to the pension fund versus the city revenue. And in the city of West Covina, on the chart, I've circled two numbers. One is the number one, meaning we're the worst city in the entire state in terms of pension risk. And the other number that I circled is 26%. That means the payments to the pension fund are 26% of revenue. That's about four or five times higher than the normal city. In layman's terms, it means you have crushing debt. And unfortunately, the recent actions by the city relative to pay raises have made the situation much worse. At the last council election, when I, meeting when I spoke, one of the councilmen said, well, this date is from 2017. True. But with the pay increases, the situation is actually worse now than it was in 2017. When you increase pay, you increase pensions essentially by the same amount. Actually, you increase it more. And that's probably something that you weren't aware of. Because most of your police and fire, in this case, are relatively near retirement. So they're only going to get the pay increase for a few years. But they're going to get the pension for 25 more years after they retire. So your actual multiplier and cost is much greater than it looks when you only look at one year. I'm estimating that, for example, the typical police or fireman is going to get an extra half a million dollars because of the pay raise in their lifetime, because of the pay raise you just granted, just because of that pay raise. And, and that's all cost to the city. And you have a chance to do something about this issue tonight. There is an action to approve this sales tax measure, but there's a choice. You can choose to ask for a financial analysis of that tax measure. And specifically, I think you need a financial analysis of the effect on pensions, of basically the pay increase. The one I'm most concerned about, I've already mentioned it at a previous meeting, is the fact that in this collective bargaining, there is a clause that says the pay will be set at the highest quarter of all the local cities. That is enormously expensive. And the biggest expense will be on the pension side. I think you need to see what that means for the city in the future. I think you need that financial analysis. The, the big effect is not right now, not in the next few months. The big effect is four or five years down the road. And I, I wish, you know, this wasn't boring numbers. But I can say that boring numbers are usually what causes the biggest trouble in any agency, whether it be government or private business. If the numbers aren't right, if they go red instead of black, everybody's in trouble. And that's what I see for this city, if things just march on with no analysis, no concern about the future. And I really would appreciate it if you adopt option three with respect to the measure, item number four, that's on your agenda tonight. Thank you.
Peter Davies? At the same time, both?
First of all, on item four, or whatever it is on the agenda, the tax increase, I want to say I totally support it. I shop in other cities as well as West Covina. And the people who come from other cities and shop in West Covina, I want them to pay, because I'm paying in their cities. So I'm in favor for that. The more important one is my safety. I live on Cameron and Citrus, or I'm the first driveway to the east, southeast. And if I pull out of my driveway with the plan that was originally presented, I'm going to be killed. There is no way I can get out of my driveway safely. People coming around the corner, making a right turn from Citrus onto Cameron, do not have time to see me pulling out of my driveway. They will hit me. If they stop for the red and still come around, as they do now, and if they have a green, they won't even have to stop. They're going to hit me. And my neighbors to the east also. They back out. The street will be five feet narrower. So there's no, I, in order to pull out with my driveway the way it is now, I have to cross both of the new lanes. The man who, the consultant we had at meetings, said in order to prevent this from happening and a lot of other problems, was going to recommend a three-lane road. Center lane being for left turns and one lane in each direction with the traffic light. That sounded great, so we didn't push too hard after that. Well, it's in the report as a minor afterthought almost. He said that's what they were going to recommend. The one other thing which would at least help would be to keep the road in front of my house a little wider, would be to have only one car in the left-hand turn pocket. If we do that, then my house and my neighbor's house would have a wider lane to turn into. Instead of being five feet reduced, it might only be one or two foot reduced. So that's my concern. There are a lot of other concerns, like speed and stuff that other people have. But my particular one is I want to live. I mean, I'm old, but I don't want to quit now. Mayor Wu is my representative to this group. I hope you, you, I'm sure he's in favor of the safety of his people. I hope the rest of you won't, because of this new system, won't ignore it and still go for the safety of people. The other thing that they can do to slightly help in my case is to widen my driveway. Now, you know, I think since the city is making the change, they should be responsible to do that. Not the whole driveway, just the exit. Because right now, if I pull straight out in order to turn, it's, well, it's deadly. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call forward Lance Volk, followed by Shannon Volk, followed by John Schumaker.
My name is Lance Volk. I happen to be neighbors of Peter across the street. And we're having a problem with scooting on Cameron. It used to be a 40 mile an hour lane there. And they changed that years ago to 45. People drive faster than ever now. They're coming from the, from the 57 across, over Grand, and then coming through. And as, as our mayor knows, that he and I had met in the intersection on accident. Yeah, yeah. And so, uh, on the plans that they are planning to do is to make from the signal all the way towards the high school way, a curb red up to 200 or some hundred feet. My son knows, he knows more on that. And there's no parking for me. We have no driveway in front of our house. We have to go to the back and park in the alley. Our garden will have to hire Uber to deliver something to our house to go mow the lawn. So it's too long for no parking. It's like in the plans, it takes out two, two or three houses. My neighbor right on that corner, they have a handicapped child. And they're going to have difficulty for dropping him on and off. And I myself am handicapped. I have difficulty walking. And that, over time, will definitely affect me. But if I, if you check the, if anybody goes by and goes from Cameron going west, you'll see the other lights down there. They only have, some of them have only 10 feet of red curb. And they have a driveway. We have none of those things that have where the red curb is, you know? Red curb is fine for part of it. You can't make it that far apart where a person can't park in front of his house. My son lets me out there so I can get into my house, you know? And then he drives around the back. Because it's difficult to work out of an alley. So that was my concern. The light, I doubt that will ever change. But now, well, instead of having accidents, we'll have fatalities. People don't try to beat a stop sign. They will lights. And we're right there at second housing on the corner. And we're watching right through the kitchen window. They slow down a little bit. It's not good. But this stuff is basically because of working on the freeways. We never had this problem until the state decided they want to make it better or whatever they're doing, ain't making my life better. So anyhow, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Shannon Volk?
Lance's son, Shannon Volk, and Peter's neighbor, across the street. Mr. Mayor, how you doing? Yeah, basically the same thing as they said. It's going to cause a dangerous situation. People will be traveling through that intersection much faster. There will be more accidents, I'm sure. In addition to that, though, as it's set right now, the red curb's going to be about 200 feet from the intersection on end, which basically covers up three, the front of three houses on, you know, all sides. If you look around at other streets, like on Hollenbeck and Vine, you know, it only comes in maybe on, on some of the streets. It comes in like maybe 30 feet or so. Well, you know, he's, his ears go by, you know? He's having a harder and harder time walking. And there's going to be a time when, you know, you know, he's going to be, you know, walker whatnot, and I'm going to have to bring him through the front of the house. Not really looking forward to that with the red zone. This is going to be kind of, kind of tough. You know, we move in, you know, we all move into homes, and you think everything's going to be fine. And, you know, 20 years later, I understand progress happens and things change and population increases and all that. I get all, I get all that. But in this case, this is something that doesn't necessarily have to have to happen. But in this case, this is something that doesn't necessarily have to happen. Though if light goes in, I understand if, you know, population increases and traffic's so bad and a light's necessary. But in the case of the red curb, that doesn't have to be the case. It doesn't have to go 200 feet, you know, on all sides of the street. So I just ask that, you know, reconsider at least that portion of it. I understand, I get it that the light's likely to go in, but some other things can accommodate. Peter has some suggestions that probably work out really nice, too. So that's what I have to say.
So Shannon, so you don't have any issue for traffic signal? Your issue is a red curb?
Well, I do. I mean, I do have an issue with the red signal, but I also understand that, you know, as population increases and things change with GPS navigation and all that, things change. I get that. No, I'm not happy about having a red light there. I do think it's going to be more dangerous, and I'm certain somebody's going to die there. I mean, somebody died on Hollenbeck with a light there about 20 years ago, running the red light there. No one's died on the intersection of Citrus and Cameron yet, but they will now. Somebody will die there. And that's unfortunate, but, you know, same.
But your major concern is a red curb, right?
Well, only because my sense of it is that the red light's going in. I would prefer to have no red light, I would prefer to have no stoplight. We would prefer to have no stoplight at all and have it just as it is. But the sense that we're all getting is that it's set to have this light here, and so we're just trying to, you know, mitigate some of the problems that that's going to cause in addition to what we're going to have to live with. So, thank you.
John Schumaker, followed by Alfred L. Williams, followed by Steve Bennett and Patricia Powert.
Four minutes, okay. I'm actually here to say a couple words about John Shuplin, who passed away about three weeks ago now. He was a person who I met in the mid-'90s. He was very active in our city, helped various members of our council and city close BKK. He's one of the few people in this community that I had the pleasure of working with that he never seemed to want anything for himself. He was a person who was very interested in the city, in some cases to his detriment. You know, he was a person who called things right or wrong, and that's the way he conducted himself. I think Herb will admit that he was, while he was on the planning commission, he was a very good, good planning commissioner, who was always prepared, always looking out for what was the best interest of the city. You know, it would be nice that we had more people like him, you know, from the standpoint to the way he carried on. There were other things that were nice. He helped make council meetings back in the late '90s and early 2000s, kind of fun to attend. He would ramp up people to come speak, and we would do things like, he put together a frequent speaker card, and you would get it stamped every time you spoke. And we joked about that the winner at the time, Mike Toohey owned a pizza parlor, and we would joke that first prize was one pizza from his pizza parlor. Second prize was two pizzas. Third prize was three pizzas. You know, but that was the type of thing that, that was a nice thing about it is, even though we all had disagreements on things, he was able to bring out some of the lighter side of, you know, what we were doing and have fun with it, you know, from that standpoint, no matter what it was. In times that I ran for school board, he was extremely helpful. And if I'd listened to him a little bit more, I would probably had success. When I helped other people's campaigns, I took into, they took to heart what he had told me and taught me. And it was, it's been more successful than not because of that. You know, we used to, since we've always were in controversial subjects, my name was Schumaker and his was Shuplin. When we ran for office, it was always kind of fun because I could knock on the door and, "John Schuplin, I can't stand that guy." My name's Schumaker. "Oh, okay." Well, when he ran for council, he got just the opposite. "John Schumaker, I can't stand you. My name's Shuplin." And since we're usually with each other, we kind of stand around the edge of the porch so they wouldn't see us, that we were working together on different things. But, you know, like I said, it was, there was a lot of fun. He worked hard for our community, you know, and it's, you know, the last few years especially because of his, you know, age and health, he wasn't as, he wasn't as involved. And I choose to remember him, you know, the strong guy who was always getting up here and had comments and things like that, and thoroughly worked for the benefit of our community. And, you know, I wish his family, you know, my condolences to them because I know how they cared for his father. I know how much he cared for his family more than anything else. My daughters went to school with the two of the, two of the sons? The younger ones, right? Oh, I'm sorry. You know, so, you know, again, you know, I'm sorry that he's gone. We're, it's, I think we're a little less, have a little less fun, you know. And, you know, there were times he always amazed me, his background, you know, a guy who rode a motorcycle, who owned a hairdressing cosmetic company at one time and things like that. I mean, he was just an amazing person with the different background that he had. And, you know, I was, I was very happy to be able to call him my friend, and I'm going to miss him. So thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening, Council. My name's Alfred Williams, 40-plus resident of West Covina. I'm here tonight because last meeting, when we had the reassignment of positions, there was a statement mentioning that we were forced to go into districts, and West Covina had done a good job of having diversity on this council. Well, for 25 years, it didn't. And that, those over 25-plus years is what got us in the situation tonight. And another situation we're in now is, we got a, something that you have to certify or sign off on is this sales tax. Now, I don't have any problem with people, they want to vote for a sales tax, you can. But there's a provision in there to get rid of or rename a finance committee. And it also dictates how many people you could have on it and who those people can are. And it happens to be that the Police Officers Association is one of them. And I, after thinking about this, I thought about it for a while. That's like me, I have a budget. Me and my wife get together and we plan it out, and then we say, "Well, we're going to have to get rid of the gardener." But the gardener has a lawyer that comes on, and he's sitting there with me. And he says, "Well, you can't do anything until I approve it. We don't need this financial thing because, hey, you're going to take my gardener's job away, or you're going to give him less hours." So we got a Police Officers Association who wants to sit here and decide. They have final approval on any changes. And this is kind of dumb to me. And like Mr. Crery said, I think you need to, which has been suggested that you can't do, but you need to do this financial analysis and explain to the public what's going to happen. Now, one of the things I keep worrying about also is, if we don't approve it, is some other state agency going to come in and take out money? We, the people, the public need to know this. If that's going to happen, we need more insight. And we need more and even more insight in your district, your district, your district, your district, and your district, okay? You need to get out there and tell the public what's going to happen. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, members of the staff, public. How are you guys doing tonight? So I'm up here, believe it or not, not to talk about the tax issue per se, but instead I'm going to talk about something else. So one of the beautiful things about this country is we have the First Amendment. We're allowed to share our opinions with little retribution. We're allowed to give insight as to what we think about something, and we're allowed to debate. We're allowed to disagree. We can agree to disagree on many things. Councilman Johnson and I have done that numerous times. I think most of you and I have done that numerous times because, in my opinion, I'm always right. But that's okay. That's part of the way debate works, is whether I agree with you or whether I disagree with you, I'm allowed to say my opinion. You're allowed to say yours. Every one of you is. So when it comes down to stifling the First Amendment, I have an issue with that. The United States has a constitution, and everywhere in the United States follows that constitution or should. We have people in this room who have served in the military. Your father served in the military, you've served in the military. There's countless people I've noticed in here that serve in the military who have defended that constitution, and friends of theirs have lost their lives defending it. Tonight, you have something in the resolution that you have to pass for the sales tax measure, which that's a different topic, but there's a section in there, section four, and I'm going to read it. "The City Council hereby repeals any prior action taken by the City Council pursuant to Elections Code, Section 9285 or other applicable law, to authorize the filing of rebuttal arguments." The last line of that paragraph, "Rebuttal arguments are not authorized for the March 3rd, 2020 election." Interesting. When we, as a board or as a council, and I say we, but you guys, not all of you, but some of you, put on the election back in November of 18, some of you were elected during that election, the idea was to eliminate the city clerk and the city treasurer. The city council allowed, obviously, ballot statements, and they allowed rebuttal ballot statements. That is the way the ballot book has always been. You go through any of the West Covina ballot books, and they've always allowed a rebuttal argument. But it's ironic that on a sales tax issue, that the city council was mute on, completely non-committal of anything, now wants to stifle both sides, and I'm fighting for both. I actually want them to put a rebuttal as much as the opposition. So I want the proponents and the opponents to put rebuttals and have that authority. I'm not arguing for one side or the other. It should be fair to both sides. But you guys are going to stop the rebuttal process. So the questions come to me. We're doing this for money? Because one of the things we talked about was, there is no amount of money that should stop democracy. Ballots should happen, elections should happen. For the most part, I agree. On districts, I thought the same thing. Okay? Whether we got there or didn't get there, I still think it should have went to the ballot. But now what you're saying is, we're not going to have rebuttal. Is it money? Or is it the city attorney who decided to put it in the resolution? I don't know. I don't think he's got any reason to do it specifically unless he's asked, but I don't know. So I think we should ask, why is it in this resolution? So I'm here today to go and basically ask you guys as a board whether you agree or disagree with the tax. All of us have our opinion. I get it. Do we really need to not have a rebuttal argument in a ballot? I don't care what other cities may have done. If other cities have taken the rebuttal arguments off, it doesn't affect my city. I'm kind of tired of, "Well, in this city, West Covina should be more like this city." No, West Covina should be West Covina. That's who we are. And if we've always had rebuttals, why are we removing it now? Why? Allow the rebuttal to happen. I'm very curious, the reason behind it. And again, I'm not pointing out the city attorney to be malicious, but I know he writes the resolution for the most part. It has to be legal. So, sorry. But I would like you guys to take that out. We have people in this audience who fought for it. We have a Purple Heart recipient, right? Purple Heart? Wounded, fighting for our constitution. And I'm sorry, it just blows my mind that we want to stifle the First Amendment in this city. I just don't get it. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Patricia Powert, followed by Bill Robinson.
Hi. I'm here also to talk about the Citrus light. I live on Citrus and Cameron, so I get affected by the bus stop. And my concern, like my neighbors', is installation of red curbs and the third lane. As it is right now with the bus stop, it's very difficult sometimes to get in and out of my driveway. I have children, we have birthday parties, we have family members coming over. I have a handicapped mother. If you installed a red curb, I wouldn't be able to park in front of my street. We would have to park around the block, and that's extremely difficult with a mother with polio and a brace and small children. I have an elderly neighbor, too, who has difficulties coming up and down her driveway. Again, she has friends coming over. If you paint her red curb, she will be difficult for her to have a social life as well. We have a gardener coming over, a plumber coming over. Where are they going to park? On a red curb? That's impossible. Okay? The other issue that we have is that unfortunately, none of my neighbors, all of us who are going to get affected by the light, requested the street light. Apparently with somebody a few years ago who requested a study, and now we're all going to get affected by it now. And looking over the staff report, it appears that the best option that wouldn't affect our neighborhood would be option three, the installation of the red light with split phase. And my concern with that is that it appears that all the counts were done during peak hours. So what's going to happen during off-peak hours, like right now, on weekends and holidays? We're going to have red lights with cars sitting in front of our driveways, and there's no traffic on the opposing streets. But yet, I won't be able to get in or out of my driveway. So another concern is that we have a bus stop on Citrus and Cameron, both sides, and then one another one just a block over on Cortez and Citrus. So can that bus stop be removed possibly on Citrus and Cameron to ease some of that congestion? That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Bill Robinson, resident. I'm here to strongly endorse the positions that have been stated regarding rebuttal arguments in respect to the proposed ballot measure on the sales tax. I guess it goes back to high school civics. I'm sort of a lover of the democratic process, and during my life, I've come to value the importance of official election material that arrives before an election. I think before an election, the more transparent, the more discussion, the better. I'm not an expert on the Election Code. The relevant section may have already been mentioned, Election Code, Section 9285B. But to me, disallowing rebuttal arguments when we've always had rebuttal arguments in this election, it's an outrage. Many cities have had similar in the last six to eight months, maybe in the last year. There have been many municipalities that have put sales tax measures on the ballot for the, and it, I'd like to know how many of those cities that had sales tax measures disallowed rebuttal arguments. I hope it's very few, but I don't think, maybe, and maybe what I'm hearing is a false rumor and that this isn't really a relevant issue. But if it is a relevant issue, I suggest that you amend your proposed resolution where it says, "Analysis and setting deadlines for the submission." The attorney is charged with impartial, preparing an impartial analysis and setting deadlines for the submission of arguments. And add the words, "including rebuttal arguments in connection with the March 3rd." I'd like the language to be included, "including rebuttal arguments in connection with the March 3rd election." Anything other is an outrage. I happen to know a very good Election Code attorney. Any resident that is concerned about this, as I am, he's a partner in a firm on Wilshire Boulevard in Westwood. Boulevard in Westwood. His name is Fred Woacher, W-O-O-C-H-E-R. He's a partner in the firm of Stormwoster and Woacher. I don't know the phone number. It can be Googled. But Fred Woacher or some Election Code attorney should be consulted to see if this is a real issue, or maybe I'm just getting all upset for no reason. But having an election with no rebuttal arguments is just outrageous. Thank you.
I have one agenda item position slipped that I was asked to read into the record by Marcia Solario. She stated that she opposes item as recommended, referring to Item 4 on the agenda.
Any other speaker?
That concludes our speaker cards.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, before I move from, okay, Concern Calendar, do we have any adjournment memory?
I live on the corner of Cameron and Citrus. And, you know, I have a lot of concerns about a stoplight. And as everybody else said, parking is a big concern. I live exactly on that corner, on the northwest corner. I also have a handicapped mother-in-law who's 85 years old that won't be able to park in front of my house if she comes or whoever brings her. And that's going to be an issue. She's going to have to walk from further away. But really, I think the main issue here is, we've all gone to several meetings, and we met with a traffic engineer in your traffic department numerous times. And at each of these, there's a number of neighbors, your constituents, that attend, and there hasn't been a single person that's attended, other than the traffic engineer, that was for the light. Everybody here today, and people that aren't here today, don't want a traffic light at that intersection. And I haven't heard a single person, other than the traffic engineer and what I've read from the council, that want a light. So the people that live there, the constituents that elect you, don't want a signal there at all. We'd like to see the status quo with better enforcement that controls the traffic flow. I don't want drag races in front of my house when the light turns green in the middle of the night and all those things. So the main reason that I want to put out there is that we don't want it, and you're supposed to represent us. So do you or don't you? And I haven't heard anybody, again, other than city representatives, that want the light. So that's it. Thank you.
Do you have adjournment?
Okay. So I would like to adjourn this meeting in honor of John Shuplin. John Shuplin was a longtime resident of the city. It's funny because I, as my father mentioned, I went to school with two of his sons, and Cameron was one of my best friends. But I actually met John first. And I met John because he was one of the members of the Raccoons, which people have heard me bring up before, is the group responsible for making sure that the BKK got closed. And so I actually met him first before I met Cameron in school. And John, I'll just give you a few of his stats. Was a member of the City Planning Commission. He was a shop volunteer. He was on the ADA Committee. He was on Visioning 2020 Citizens Congress. He had the Mayor's Award for service in the Raccoons. He was on the Personnel Commissioner, and he was the Commissioner of the Senior Citizens Commission. So he was, the entire time he lived here, very, very active in our community. I remember late nights after council meetings, a huge group of us going to Denny's. He was a member of the original Peanut Gallery, which was a group of citizens who would sit up there and discuss what was going on at the council meeting below them. And it was sometimes a bit disruptive, so that it became for staff only after that. But he genuinely cared about our community, and he was always there to lend a helping hand. He was one of my strongest supporters when I ran for school board. He came up with an interesting solution when people started stealing my signs. And all I'll say about that is, you better hope you had a tetanus shot if you tried to pull one of them. So he definitely brought fun to the table. I am deeply sorry to hear about his passing and want to thank Devin and Rhonda for being here tonight and give you condolences on behalf of myself and the rest of the council and let you know how important he was to all of us. And thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Schumaker. Do we have any other council member? Any adjournment? Nope. Okay. Now we're moving to the Concern Calendar. Do any council want to pull? Any agenda?
I don't really want to, but I think we need to pull four, just so I can ask a clarifying question.
So number four been pulled. Anything else?
I do also want to make a statement on number four.
Okay. So you want to wait for when she pulls the...
She can pull first.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve Agenda Number 1, 2, 3, 5, 6?
Make a motion, a first.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have first and second. Do I have any objection? So 5-0 approved?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we go to Agenda Number 4. Okay. Councilmember Schumaker, please.
I just wanted a point of clarification on this because there may be some confusion as to what will not be allowed. And so I just wanted to clarify that the proponents will have a statement and the opponents will have a statement. And is that correct?
Through the chair, yes, that is exactly right. There will be an impartial analysis by the city attorney, arguments by proponents in favor, and an argument by opponents against.
So both sides will have their voices heard?
Yes.
Okay. That's my clarifying question.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, mine is also is on item number four. You know, I will be voting on this item tonight because I do believe we definitely need it. But I do have a problem with the rebuttal. No, I believe that, yes, both sides will have a statement, but I believe that we should have a rebuttal on it. So, yes, I will be voting for it because, like I said before, I feel it's the right thing to do, but I definitely believe that there should be a rebuttal on there.
So Councilman Johnson, do you want to amend the agenda? Do you want to amend it? Can we...
You know, I would. I'd ask for amendment to have the rebuttal on there, but if we have a majority, if the council would like to second it, I would.
Do you want to make a motion?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we amend it so we have a rebuttal on there.
Do I have a second? So we're going to approve the agenda with amended...
Before we have a motion, can we ask if this is even possible?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we can do this. We have language in there. The clerk can create some language real quickly. We'll read it to you. That'll be part of your motion.
Okay.
It'll be establishing rebuttal arguments pursuant to 9284-85B, and then we'll be setting a date that needs to be in compliance with the county's dates.
The council can amend it, and at the same time, we can call for the approval or denial.
Absolutely.
Mayor, this is quite important. Could we have a moment to make sure we get it right before we present the language to you?
You have all the time.
Thank you, sir. I apologize. We just want to make sure we get the words correct.
Okay. Do you want to take a quick break? So we can take off?
Okay, five minutes reset. Okay. We're going to continue the meeting. Okay, city managers, city attorney, are you guys ready?
Yeah.
Order. Excuse me, can we have a seat, please?
Gentlemen.
Gentlemen, sharon, please have a seat. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We want to send everybody home, okay, so we don't miss our bedtime. Okay, ready? Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've drafted an amendment to attachment number 4, Resolution Number 2019-97. Like to read it into the record, please. Section 4 is stricken with this substitute language. "The city council authorizes that rebuttal arguments may be submitted pursuant to Elections Code, Section 9285. The deadline for submitting arguments is 5:30 p.m. on Thursday, December 19th. And with that, we'd recommend the entire package of resolutions for your approval."
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Managers, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so...
The rebuttal.
Okay, so...
Okay, so, okay, so basically, do we have to read everything again? Or we just can do the roll call? We have the motion and we have a second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, okay, and second by Mayor Protem Lopez. Okay, and roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellanos?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Lopez Viado? Mayor Wu?
And I abstain my vote, so it's 4-1 approved. Okay. To number seven, regarding the consideration to install a traffic signal system and other traffic calming improvement at the intersection of Citrus Street and Cameron Avenue. And who's going to present, have this presentation?
Mayor Wu and Council, we have a whole team of people to present on this. I know we had a number of public comments and suggestions. We've got a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'd like to go through before we turn to council questions. So with that, I'm going to ask Director Anderson to introduce the item.
So as you can tell, we're working to get the PowerPoint up for the presentation. Tonight, we're going to have a presentation by our team from TransTech, Jana Robbins and Melissa DeMercy. And so they are from TransTech, they are transportation consultants. They have been with us since September. So this process has been going on for some time, and they were not involved in the whole process, but they have a description of it. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jana to introduce the project.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilpersons, residents. My name is Jana Robbins. I work for TransTech Engineers. We are the city's new traffic and engineering consultant. This item, number seven, is a potential traffic signal at the intersection of Citrus and Cameron. It has been brought before council, so the council may determine the best course of action that will minimize impacts to residents while providing for a safe and functioning intersection. As shown in the staff report and attachments, the results of the traffic warrant study found that the data supported a signal at this location. In traffic terms, a signal met warrants for signalization, or in other words, exceeded thresholds in volume during eight hours, four hours, and peak hours, as well as met the collision warrant. So warrants one, two, three, and seven were met. Melissa DeMercy, also with our traffic engineering department, will briefly summarize some of the data conducted to come to this conclusion. At the end of the presentation, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jana. I'll go ahead and begin with an existing conditions of the current intersection. The Cameron and Citrus intersection is currently always stop-controlled with two lanes in each direction and no left-turn pockets. There are existing marked crosswalks in all legs. Cameron has a posted speed limit of 45 miles per hour, while Citrus has a posted speed limit of 40 miles per hour. These are photos of drone images that were taken earlier in November during AM and PM times. A six-hour vehicular turning movement count was conducted, as well as pedestrian counts, during a typical weekday while school was in session. And during the pedestrian counts, it was found that many of the pedestrians were using the crosswalk in the afternoon, and 80 Peds used the intersection during the peak one hour during the afternoon time. An accident history was also conducted over the most recent five-and-a-half-year data available. And the data was collected through SWITTERS, which is the State of California statewide integrated traffic record system. And a total of 28 total accidents were reported. 16 of those accidents reported were broadside collisions. And this is a collision diagram showing those accidents at the intersection. There were two public meetings held prior to TransTech coming onboard. One of them was the Traffic Committee meeting on June 11th, as well as the Community Workshop meeting on August 13th. During both of those meetings, the city heard from the residents. Also, traffic calming measures along Cameron Avenue to address speeding concerns were also looked at, which later I'll get into the details of what the recommended items are. And all traffic control devices, including traffic signals, are guided by the CMUTCD, which is the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, as well as the CVC, which is the California Vehicle Code, traffic engineering reports, and traffic engineering judgment. Based on the analysis conducted, the intersection did meet those guidelines, CMUTCD, traffic signal warrants one, two, three, and seven. We did go ahead and analyze three potential options. Option one would be installation of left-turn pockets in each direction. This option would require that parking would be eliminated near the intersection and red curbed. Option two that was analyzed was the eastbound and westbound directions on Cameron Avenue have left-turn pockets. This would also require elimination of parking and red curb near the intersection. And option three is no left-turn pockets, and this option would require no additional red curb, and the existing on-street parking as-is would be preserved, and the existing lane geometry would be as-is. And with that, based on the analysis and traffic engineering study and the guidelines, staff recommendation is, one, to approve the installation of the traffic signal, and two, to approve option three. For this option, there would be no left-turn pockets installed for any direction. All directions would have their own cycle, and the current lane configuration that is existing in the field would remain with no additional red curb. This option would have the least impact to parking. And item number three would be to approve traffic calming measures along Cameron, specifically between Hullenbeck and Citrus. And this would include white side stripes that would visually narrow the street for vehicles driving along Cameron, and also installed speed feedback signage with pavement legends that would show the speed of vehicles traveling along Cameron. And also, if council were to approve this item, this process could take six to 12 months. And the reason for that timeline is there's a final design and bidding, and also currently there is a long wait time for actual traffic signal pull procurement. That lead time is minimum six months right now for that material, and that's the reason for that timeline. And we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Council, do we have, anybody have a question? Yeah. Okay, Councilwoman Shoemaker, please?
I see that Will Dunn started this and then TransTech finished this, so I understand if you don't have the answers. Did we look at any other options besides lights? For example, there's streets that lead up to there, maybe putting in additional stop signs leading up to that intersection? Maybe putting in the blinking stop signs? Looking at the accidents, quite frankly, I agree with the speakers. Most of them happen when clearly somebody was not paying attention because somebody was almost all the way across and somebody comes out and hits them. So it's kind of interesting. I don't see how a light's going to stop somebody not paying attention. And so I was just wondering what other options were looked at. When was the traffic study done that made the speed limit 45 on Cameron? Was that redone to maybe lower the speed limit?
I can answer some of those.
Okay.
One, the speed limit is, the city in 2017 had a engineering and traffic survey done, and this is mandated by state law. Every speed limit is set to what five miles, the closest five mile per hour speed to the 85th percentile. So in this case, the 85th percentile was 47 miles per hour, I believe. So the speed limit was set at 45. Now, if it was 47.8, it would have been 50. You have the ability from the CVC and that California MutCD to lower the speed limit only by five miles per hour unless there's extenuating circumstances. So it's really tough to go more than five miles per hour lower than the 85th percentile.
Would, a very valid issue that was brought up is the construction on the 10 freeway. And so that is causing people to get off at ground either from the 60, the 57, the 10, and use hills and go through there in a way that they would not have in the past. And so would that be an extenuating circumstance that we have had an increase of traffic that's not usual that's contributing to the speed maybe being higher than it normally is?
The only reason we could lower it pretty much is for accidents. You have a higher-than-normal statewide accident report. They have an expected rate and then what your rate is. So if you have...
So at 28 accidents are we there?
Yeah, it has to have a lot of accidents in order to justify it, or if there's a change. You have a change, and let's say, to answer another question, stop signs on Cameron. Cameron has about 18,000 ADT. So normally, we do not place stop signs on an intersection, at an intersecting streets with that high of ADT. I mean, Cameron and Citrus has been existing for a while, so everyone's used to it, but we wouldn't place new ones. ADT is average daily traffic, sorry.
I understood. Again, what is the level to be considered high accidents? And you mentioned that there isn't allowable to go down five, so can we move it down to 40?
It's something we would have to look at because then it would also, you'd have to redo the survey and then bring it back, see what the 85th percentile is at, see, redo the accidents. I mean, it is a possibility. It would have to go through the whole process of council approval and that. So you could, it is something that you could look at.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not sure if I answered all of your questions.
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other council member question? Yeah. Okay, councilman, okay.
I would like to know, first of all, when did this first arise? How many years ago did it first arise that they wanted a signal on Cameron and Citrus? Do you guys have an idea, Jeff? Maybe you can tell me.
I wish I could. I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's roughly about two years.
Just two years ago? So by listening to some of the residents right there, some of them, the stop signs were there when they moved in. You know, so to me, buying a house right now, and if I have a stop sign in front of my house, I don't know if I'd want a signal there. But what I'm saying is that I don't know how many residents came out when you guys were doing these meetings and stuff, that came out and said, yes, we want a signal there. So at this time, I'm not ready even to consider it. I don't know if we want it, there might be a consideration to table this, where we can get a little bit more information.
So you want to make a motion to table this for further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion so we can table this, so we have more discussion on it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, first, I have a second. Do I have any objection for table this for the further discussion? Because I think the problem issue I have is we have so many residents live on the intersection and further down, okay, and they have a major impact, okay? And we need to consider it about their convenience, okay, because they're moving there first, okay? And how can we reduce the traffic, okay, and increase the traffic safety? And we see what we can do. And I agree, I think, okay, for, I live right close by, okay, and I saw that major issue of Cameron, the people speeding, okay, it's a traffic enforcement issue, and the stop signs, some people don't stop. I got T-bone over there, okay, and one time last year, when I ran the election. Again, I don't have a car. Okay, so I know how difficult over there, but again, there's people don't stop on the stop sign. So I think, okay, what we can do is, we need to have input from our resident living over there to see what kind of impact. And the red curb, and if you really go to 30 feet, okay, or further, that far, then really have an issue for their living over there to park their car, to move their thing into it. I know the neighborhood very well, so we have a first and a second. Do we have any comment? Okay, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Parking is a commodity, so I just want to make sure that parking is always a key element, especially when you have visitors and those who are delivering things. So that has to be highly taken into consideration, and of course, safety as well. But I want to make sure parking and the residents are well taken care of on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And Casiano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'd like to see if we could eliminate the red curb, and also, one thing I've always noticed on Cameron, and I'd like to see if we could get more on this, is it's used, I think, oftentimes like a Speedway. I see so many cars racing on it. Got a lot of nice cars in the area, and sometimes it's a nice straightaway for people to test their engines on, and I just want to make sure we publicize any kind of findings about that, and come up with a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Any other council member comment? Okay, before I go to, okay, you won't have something to say?
Just quickly, I just want to make sure everyone's clear. Our proposal is option three, which would not have any red curb. So that's what we're recommending, but we recognize that you may not take that action.
I'm fine with tabling it. I'm not interested in having a light there. Quite frankly, I know that there's accidents there. There's accidents at the bottom of my hill pretty consistently because people blow through the stop signs. The residents who live around it, who would be most impacted, have said they don't want it. So I would like to, when it comes back, hear the other options based on the questions I asked. So making the stop sign more visible, lowering the speed limit. And I understand some of that will need studies and things like that, but I at least want to know the options and the steps for those other options. And it may be, you know, something that always works is having an officer sit there for a while and give tickets. When you start to be afraid of the cops sitting there, you start to slow down and you start to pay more attention. So, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to handle this without jumping straight to the stoplight.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, could we consider, we see a lot of the blinking stoplights? You know, blinking stoplights get your attention.
The LED, right?
Yeah, the LED, because I see them all over the place now. When you come up to them, you see them before you get to them. Some of the other stop signs they have, they're kind of faded away, and you don't see them until you get right on top of them. So I would hope that we were looking into that, too. Thank you.
We can look into all of those. Now, the only thing I want to bring up is you have to consider now that you have 28 accidents at the intersection with 16 broadside accidents. This means people turning left was hit by opposing vehicle. So now you kind of have a history of some accidents at this intersection. So it's something to consider.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
You know, I do agree on something like that, but that's why if you, you know, they got broadsided because they ran the stop sign. That's mainly why they got broadsided. I think with like a blinking stop signs for the LEDs like that, it gets their attention. And I don't think you would have as many stoplights being run.
The comment just reiterated what I'm saying, which is, we need to do something about the intersection. A traffic light does not have to be the only solution. And so I, as a council member, want to see other options before we move forward.
Okay, Councilwoman Shoemaker? Okay, I think, basically, I think you get all the information that the council description is basically to find any other option. Okay, traffic signal, the stop sign with a beacon, with LED, or any kind of, and load the speed. So maybe in all the consideration, and then have input from the resident and bring them, okay, about the fact, and something we can work together, and then bring back, okay, and then we can discuss again. So other than that, do we have any objection? So you will be table for further discussions or 5-0 approved. Thank you. Now we move to agenda number, okay, eight, consideration of a war bid for Civic Center and the City Park landscape and the maintenance service. Now, who's going to present this agenda?
Mayor and Council, we've got Mark Persico, Mike Cressop, with a brief staff report to provide information in addition to that contained within your staff report. This item returns to you from your last agenda. You wanted a further look at it, and that's what we're going to provide tonight.
Sorry about that. No, the button didn't work, you know? Good evening, Mayor Wu, council members. I'm here to present item number eight. Consideration of award of bid for Civic Center and Park Landscape Maintenance. We have a brief PowerPoint that has a few key points from the actual contract. Not every detail of the contract, but the main points. And after we're done with the presentation, here to answer any questions you may have. So the first slide shows, we have 16 parks here in West Covina. This slide breaks down our total acreage, how much of it is turf, grass, area, field, space, things like that, and then hardscape. With the 16 parks, our total acreage is about 190 acres. So as you guys know, the city's pretty big, and we have a pretty large scale. There's 15 bathrooms at these parks throughout the city, and part of this contract includes opening and closing park bathrooms, cleaning and maintaining those bathrooms. So, go to the next slide. Main point of the contract, maintain all landscaping throughout the Civic Center and City Parks. Open park restrooms by 7:00 AM, close park restrooms between 8:00 PM and 9:30 PM during spring and summer, 6:00 PM and 7:30 PM during fall and winter. Daily restroom cleaning and midday restocking is part of the contract, seven days a week. They monitor irrigation controls, repair sprinklers as needed, clean and post signage for weekend pavilion rentals. Our pavilion program, we do about 15 to 20 rentals a weekend. So it's a large part of the contract as well. Another key point of the contract is applying pesticides as needed to control pests, weeds, and infestations. That's not every aspect of what you need, but if there's any major outbreaks of red ants, we just had issue with Gopher at Cortez Park. That's included in the contract as well. Main changes to this contract from the previous contract, trash pickup in the previous contract was only stipulated to be on Monday. So after the weekend, trash would be picked up, and the rest of the week, nothing was done. This has been changed to where trash pickup will be seven days a week. In addition, we've added bulky item removal from trash enclosures. This has been a big problem. Most of our Monday mornings, our crew spent going out, picking up illegal dumping at most of the parks throughout the city. So in this contract, that will be done on Fridays and on Mondays. In addition to that, if those days do not work, or are not the best days, we can change those at any time in the contract. Would have liked to do seven days a week, but there is more manpower and tools needed to do that. So we were not able to add seven-day-a-week bulky item pickup. Daily playground inspections, that's something that needs to be done at all times to make sure that we, you know, keep our liabilities down. Raking, from raking woodchips to checking the apparatuses and doing all those things. So that will be done on a daily basis and be reported out weekly. Replace all broken sprinklers, not just vandalize as stated in the previous contract. In the old contract, they would only replace a broken sprinkler if we could prove there was vandalism. So now, in this case, any point, any sprinkler broken is in the contract, and they are to replace it. Athletic field weed abatement. For example, at Cortez Park, we have a lot of the green leaf that comes up, and the park isn't much turf there. So this isn't turf repair, but they are supposed to keep all our ball fields from being overgrown by different kinds of weeds and things of that nature. And then the last thing on this contract, we chose to do a two-and-a-half-year contract with two one-year extensions to synchronize with the fiscal year budget. My predecessors before me, I don't know why they did the contract mid-year, but we don't like coming asking for money mid-year, so wanted to make sure that we got that on the fiscal cycle instead of mid-year. Last but not least, our recommendation is to authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Merchants Landscape Services Incorporated in the total amount of $3,503,000 for two-and-a-half-year contract with two one-year extensions to provide landscaping and maintenance services for Civic Center and City Parks. There does need to be an appropriation of $32,000 from the general fund balance to service contracts, and then obviously Adopt Resolution Number 2019-86, adopting a budget amendment for the fiscal year commenced in July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mike. Any question? Any question? No question? No, I have, no question? Okay, okay, go ahead.
Do we have any reps for merchants here, or will we get their contact info, maybe one or two top people?
Oh, obviously, we deal with them on a daily basis. I mean, they're very responsive to our needs, and that's one of the reasons we suggested, you know, that we, as a team, felt Merchants was the best pick for us after interviews and going through the process. That information is readily available, and we can get that. Yes, we have that. And as you know, they'll meet us at any time.
Thank you.
Oh, any other question? So I have a question, okay? I remember last time when they approved Aztec, okay, cleaning the bathroom, and their price is low, but, okay, nobody could guarantee the performance, and the performance is horrible. Okay, and I think, okay, everybody said Merchant is much better. So it looked like Merchant, okay, can do a better job than the previous, okay, any other contractor. Am I right?
I do feel Merchants is the best provider, yes.
Yeah, and they including cleaning the bathroom or a package. Am I right? So they including the 16, okay, our parks, and including our Civic Center?
Yes, that's correct.
And I've been saying so many times, we have some dead, okay, small tree. Okay, our Civic Center, it doesn't, it's not presentable. And then we have that hill, it's kind of bare, okay, with nothing. Okay, and I'm not talking about on the side or the construction, I'm talking about outside. Do we can have them to put a cheap ground cover?
One note, one note that I want to do, let you know that actually I didn't see here, that I wanted to point out. Trees are not included in this contract. There is no, in parks or any, or the Civic Center, trees is a completely separate issue.
Even a small tree, even a dead tree outside, it's not their job to kind of move away?
No, we would use West Coast arborists for that.
So even small, tiny little tree?
Depending, if, I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I think if the tree is under six feet, then they can deal with it. So if there was a dead, small tree, yes, they would remove it.
So under the six-feet tree?
Yes.
Okay, and it's dead, okay, it's horrible, then they will remove it?
Yes.
So some of our kind of small tree, so they should remove, okay, from our Civic Center?
I need to see which trees you're referring to, but to be clear, this contract, the county is taking their area back. So we are only responsible for our courtyard, the hillside here, the small area in front of...
How about the hill we facing, that we are seeing this hill facing us?
On West Covina Parkway, or the one?
No, right over here, or our parking lot.
That is our responsibility, yes.
Yeah, and then it kind of, it's bare, has no grass. Is that possible, we can put some ground cover? It's pretty cheap, okay?
That is not part of this contract, but we will definitely look into that.
Would you please, okay, I think this is our face. We need to have some kind of ground cover, and we can plant some kind, and how about plant a flower or some vegetation? Is their job, or we have to pay extra?
We would have to, their job, if something died on their watch, they must replace it. That's stipulated in the contract, but anything that's not there, they are not responsible for bringing in new.
For example, like our Civic Center, the monument, can we put some, okay, cheap flower? They put a little bit of water, they, like my office, they four-season, okay? And it's colorful, and it's inexpensive. I think we should do it to make our city beautiful, okay, more colorful.
We agree, whether it be medians, city hall, whatever the case may be. We've been working, trying to find ways to do that. That being said, we will continue to do that, but it's not part of this contract.
Got it. So they only do the maintenance, okay, mow the lawn, okay, move the small dead tree? Okay, and fix the sprinkler, and clean the bathroom?
Correct, but for example, we have a parade next weekend. We have our Christmas parade, the second Christmas parade on Glendora. So we went, we paid for material, they went and implanted all in for us. So we put flowers in there, things like that, and now that we put it in, they're responsible to maintain it.
So we will plan some extra for our staff?
Correct.
So final question, okay? I promise then send them home as early as I can, so I don't want to take too much time, you know, and don't win it. Okay, okay, quickly, regarding 16 park, okay, and including the Civic Center. So that's not including our, okay, median, okay, curb, like a street, it's not their job?
We, no, it's not. We have three separate, well, we have four separate contracts at this point, but we are working on combining, you know, hoping to improve costs by, you know, by having a larger scope. The land maintenance districts are separate, then we have the medians, those are separate, and we have the parks and the Civic Center.
Is that possible, is that possible, we can negotiate and all inclusive and with a package? So it would be more economic at the same time, people accountable for, because I see that our median is horrible. So can we all inclusive, so in that way, we can get a better price?
We, what we are working to, instead of having, when I started, there was five different contracts. We're down to four. My goal is to get to three. There are different issues with certain contracts, but I agree with everything you're saying, and that's what we're trying to do. This year, Mr. Carmen and I have been talking extensively about the medians and how we're going to do that, and we're bouncing a couple of things around to come back.
And you can see a Cameron street on the curb, you can see nothing but the weed goes so high, and then nobody even do anything, and all the places, even the south side and north side. Okay, I think we should address, maybe we can combine all together, while you have so many of contractors. I think maybe we should, maybe one, so they're all responsible for cleaning up our city.
When I took over, I was dealing with three different contractors. I've been in charge of Public Works, on the maintenance side of Public Works now for about a year. I was in charge of three different contractors, and everywhere I went, everybody was going like this. They were pointing their fingers at everybody else. So my big push has been to make it where we have one provider, and I don't have to point my fingers at anybody else, and I can go to one person and hold them accountable. That's my job, and that's what I want to do. So that's one of the reasons that we recommended Merchants in this. The other thing that I wanted to point out and bring to your attention was, we didn't just go off what we felt, we called other cities. All references came back that the, all the companies that bidded, they felt Merchants was the best provider out of those. We reached out to two different cities, and we got the same responses there. They felt that their responsiveness and their willing to change and get up to speed was much quicker than everybody else. So it wasn't just our experience with them, it's what we reached out and found out as well.
Yep, thank you, Mike. Okay, I want to commend you, okay? I think you are the one of a very good staff, okay? And every time I emailed you, you right away checked all the places, and I trust you. I think this is something, it's a good contract, okay? And do I have a motion?
Our motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I love my parks.
So you want the first?
I'll motion it, love parks.
Okay, so Mayor Pro Tem Letty has a motion. Who wants a second? Okay, and Councilman Johnson, we're second. Do I have any objection? Nope, so 5-0 approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
We're moving to the mayor and council member report. Do we have AB 1234 conference or meeting report? Do we have any? Nope, okay, now we're moving to city council request. Okay, report or any other may I for next agenda? Do we have any? No, I'm going to move to adjourn. Do I have a second? Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much. Now clock. Okay.